That's great. I love it. That's kind of where I'm at now. But I kept screwing up the past couple of times coming back because there's that thing to go to Reno when you hit Sacramento. And they're doing the construction and the sign's gone. And I was like, put it in your phone. My wife said, so then we found it.
What?
All right, 6 o'clock. Call to order this meeting of the Regional Planning Commission. It's Monday, December 2nd. We're in the Sparks Council. And could I get a roll call?
Sure. Manny Higbasera for Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Dallas Reski.
Here.
Michael Flick. Marilyn Kramer.
Here.
Carl Nieberlein.
Here.
Rob Pierce.
Here.
Shelley Reed.
Here.
Carrie Urrermeier.
Here.
And Alex Velto.
Here.
That is all.
All right. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three. Has everybody had a chance to look over the agenda? If so, could I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve the agenda.
This is Rob. I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any public comment in the chambers on general items not agendized in this meeting?
We have none.
All right, moving on. Item number 5A, the November 13th Regional Planning Commission minutes. Has everyone had a chance to look them over? If so, do I have a motion?
This is Rob. I move to approve as written.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's not required. Does anyone have any motion to modify the dates? All right. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as written?
This is Rob. I move to accept as written.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, for the business of the day.
Thank you, Mr. Chair today. The business of the day will be a public hearing item, a regional plan conformance review for a project of regional significance for Nevada Energy Gas Line. We have Regional Planner Chris Tolly to take us through this item. And do you want to make this?
Sure. I need to disclose and recuse myself on this item. I am employed by NV Energy and it would be inappropriate for me to vote on their application.
So I will take over running this item. So proceed.
Good evening, Chris Tolly, TMRPA. Get my mic situated. This item is a conformance review for the NV Energy Gas Line Upgrading Project of Regional Significance, and that case number is CR 24-011. So as noted, the proposal is a project of regional significance, and we'll cover the details about this proposal on the following slides. As far as the location is concerned, the gas line starts at the existing Lemon Valley Gas Regulation Station and heads 800 feet southwest to North Virginia, then westerly adjacent to North Virginia for 12,000 feet, then heads north across I-395 for 1,200 feet to its terminus. Again, that's approximately 1,400 or 14,000 feet in length. Regional planning staff does recommend that the PRS conforms with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. You can see on the regional location map, the subject gas line in red. The proposal again is a PRS to allow the existing gas line that currently operates at 90 pounds per square inch, or PSI, to increase to 235 PSI. Again, the subject gas line is 14,000 feet in total length, and the Nevada revised statutes and the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan identify that gas regulator stations and mains that operate over 100 PSI are, again, projects of regional significance and require a review as is presented in this item. NV Energy submitted the materials for consideration on October 24th. As a proposal does not require building permit or land use entitlement through local jurisdiction, NV Energy submitted the materials directly to TMRPA. Finally, the gas line is located in Tier 1 and Tier 2 regional land designations, and a more close-up view of the gas line on the neighborhood map. And here is the essentially aerial exhibit provided by NV Energy as part of the materials. And to shift to going over the review criteria, which is set by policy RC9 of the 2019 Regional Plan, and that identifies the five factors that the RPC must consider when evaluating conformance. And we'll step through some of the highlights from the staff report. Regarding population growth, proposal includes no change in residential densities. Regarding regional form, proposed gas line upgrading will not modify the existing regional form. Regarding public facilities and services, the proposed project will upgrade an existing gas line and will not require the provision of public facilities and services. The gas line operating will provide system improvements and reliability to NV Energy's customers in the North Valley area. And finally, regarding regional coordination, TMRPA does ensure that regional coordination is at the forefront of our work, and we require, we work with jurisdictional staff and other relevant entities during the conformance review process. Finally, we also coordinate with NV Energy on the various projects that require review by regional planning, as in the case with this one. And to conclude my presentation, here is the proposed motion, which is also located on, I believe, page 18 of the packet. TMRPA staff and NV Energy staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for staff or anybody from NV Energy? And they're here, right?
Yep.
Okay, well, you have a question. Go ahead.
Sure, one question. Chris, probably be a theme for some of the other items before us, but I guess, given the recent proposed updates to the natural resource plan and the overall regional plan, I just was curious how staff ensure this project aligns with both 2019 Regional Plan and the direction we're moving towards.
That's a great question, and I think the primary component to consider here is that this gas line is existing. And has been installed. I don't know exactly when it was installed, but it is currently existing and operating at 90 pounds per square inch. So this is, what's being considered through this item is really just going above that 100 PSI threshold, as is set by the thresholds in state law and the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to go up to 235. So that is really the primary consideration in looking at this. If there was construction involved with it, earthwork, something that had to go through the locals additionally, we would look at that in more depth, considering the natural resources plan, as well as the public facilities and services information that's being brought to, brought to bear through the 2019 Regional Plan update. I hope that kind of gets at answering your question somewhat indirectly, but the primary consideration is, again, that the gas line exists currently.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Any other questions? All right, well, this is a public hearing. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We have none.
Hey, I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission, and any, for any discussion, or I'll entertain a motion. Don't all speak up at once. Madam Chair, I'll make the motion. I move to find the NV Energy Gas Line Upgrading Project of Regional Significance in conformance with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report. Perfect. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Higbasera, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hey, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you past Chair Reed for taking over on that item. We have item 7B, which is another public hearing item. In this case, it's a Washoe County Master Plan Amendment, conformance review, and also a regional plan amendment to necessitate a tier change. We can have Chris Tolly to take us through.
Good evening again, Commissioners Chris Tolly, TMRPA. This item is both a conformance review for a master plan amendment and a regional plan amendment for the York Amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan. The case numbers are CR 24-010 and RPA 24-003. So again, this proposal is both an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan and an amendment to the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan, and we'll go through the details similarly on the following slides. Washoe County Board of County Commissioners approved the proposed master plan amendment and regional plan amendment sponsorship at their October 8th meeting of this calendar year. Finally, regional planning staff does recommend that the proposed amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan and the regional plan conform with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. And then we can see here on the slide, the regional form showing the subject site and the mid lower left. Continuing on with the overview, the approximately 14.5 acre subject site is located at 70 Bear Mountain Place, southeast of the intersection of Woodchuck Circle and Bear Mountain Place. Subject site is also located in the Tier 3 regional land designation, designation which is being, which is proposed to change as part of this project. In regard to the conformance review and master plan amendments, the proposal includes an amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan to change the land use for the subject site from rural to rural residential. Additionally, the proposal considered by Washoe County includes a regulatory zone amendment from general rural to high-density rural on approximately 7.1 acres, the subject site, and open space, which is approximately 6.7 acres. Here, we can see the existing and proposed land uses. Again, the existing land uses rural, and that would change to rural residential through this process. And to go over the regional plan amendment portion of this, the site is currently located in the Tier 3 regional land designation. Proposed amendment to the Washoe County Master Plan necessitates an amendment to the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to change the regional land designation from Tier 3 to Tier 2, because Tier 3 lands are limited to the existing residential densities, and that is set, in this case, by the rural land use. Tier 2 does allow for up to 30 dwelling units per acre. However, the materials submitted by Washoe County indicate that the overall proposal would allow for parcels as small as 2.5 acres in size. And here you can see the existing and proposed regional land designations. Again, the site is currently located in the Tier 3, and through this process would change to Tier 2 should it be approved. To go over the primary policies being considered through this, policy RC9 sets a conformance review evaluation factors, which we considered in the previous item. And then for the regional plan amendment side, policy RC5, regional plan designation amendments, and the overarching RC10, regional plan amendment findings, set the evaluations to be considered for that portion. Policy RC5, which is shown on the right-hand side of the slot, this slide, sets specific criteria for inclusion into different tiers, in this case, Tier 3 to Tier 2. The criteria analysis is embedded in the analysis provided for policy RC10. To start with, the review criteria for the conformance review portion of this, again, policy RC9 sets the review criteria for the RPC to consider when evaluating conformance. And we'll step through the analysis contained in the staff report on the following slides. In regard to population growth, this request proposes to change the land use designation again from rural to rural residential. This proposal would allow for parcels as small as 2.5 acres in size. Materials submitted indicate that the overall proposal would result in one additional dwelling unit being established on the site. Subject site, in regards to regional form, the subject site is located in the Tier 3, Tier 3 regional land designation of the Truckee Meadows Service Area. However, this request does, again, change, propose to change the regional land designation to Tier 2. Per the regional plan, the development in Tier 2 is at suburban levels with a variety of residential and non-residential uses. This proposal is consistent with Tier 2. The proposal overall is also compatible with the existing development pattern in this portion of the region. Again, the existing and proposed land use designations. In regard to public facilities and services, materials submitted by Washoe County indicate that public facilities and services are currently located in the subject area. However, any future development on the site will likely be served by individual water and sewage disposal systems. The flood control, stormwater facilities will be instructed pursuant to the Washoe County Storm Drainage Standards and appropriately conditioned during a development review process. Regarding transportation, the primary set of roadway improvements is anticipated to occur on-site, such as a driveway or access road. And finally, the proposal is not expected to generate many students. In regard to natural resources, overall, the proposal is not anticipated to significantly impact natural resources. A review of regional plan map for development constraints area identified that the subject site contains development constraints for slopes greater than 30%, which is present on approximately half of the subject site. The majority of the DCA area for slope is proposed to be located in the open space regulatory zone. Any future residential development of the site will be required to comply with the applicable Washoe County zoning code sections that address slope. In regard to regional coordination, TMRPA again ensures regional coordination is at the forefront of our work, and we work with jurisdictional staff and other relevant entities during the conformance review process. And finally, regional planning staff did provide an initial review memorandum for this particular case. Moving on to policy RC10, which sets the review criteria that the RPC and RPGB must consider when evaluating a regional plan amendment. And we'll step through a few additional points from the staff report. In regard to regional capacities and growth projections, the increase in potential residential density due to the, due to the proposed tier change is limited to the approximately 14.5 acre site and would essentially result in one additional dwelling unit. In regard to existing and planned developments, there are multiple residential developments in the vicinity, and the proposal fits within the character of this area. In regard to the vision, goals, and policies of the regional plan, the health, or the subject site is approximately .2 miles south of Tier 2 lands. However, the intervening properties are developed at suburban levels found in Tier 2 lands. The proposal represents an appropriate extension of Tier 2 lands, especially considering the limited scope of the project. And I've got a couple, correct, or actually one correction here, which is on page 36 of the packet. The very end of this page, the reference says Tier 3 lands. It should actually say Tier 2 lands. So page 36, end Tier 3 should read actually Tier 2. And to wrap things up, so in conclusion, staff is recommending the proposal conforms with the applicable policies of the regional plan. Primary policies include, again, RC9, which sets the conformance review findings criteria, RF5, which sets the criteria for inclusion in Tier 2 lands, and RC10, which sets the regional plan, regional plan amendment findings criteria. One additional correction, on page 51 of the packet, which is the resolution, the two dates referring to Washoe County action should actually read October 8th, 2024, and that is reflected in the resolution that is here for signing. So with that, the proposed motion is on the screen or on page 39 of the packet. This does conclude my presentation. However, TMRPA and Washoe County staff are available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the commission?
Commissioner Higbasera here. Pretty much same one as kind of before, where since we're kind of in this, in this state where we're moving from the 2019 to 2024 regional plan, was there any additional consideration needing to be given or reconciliation?
Yeah, I think the additional consideration really just looks at the amount of development proposed, and in this particular case, in fact, I'm going to go back to an exhibit showing, we did use the public infrastructure information that's available to see, I mean, this is, this was also done for previous regional land designation amendment that occurred in this area, but so we know approximately where the water part, water pipes are, sewer pipes. So that process provided data for us to use in this. And then the limited scope of the development, which is, if I could go to one more, I guess this is probably as good as it gets. But basically, what is being proposed here, again, is rural going to rural residential, and that has 2.5 acre minimum parcel size inside the Truckee Meadows Service Area. And the regulatory zoning, which we're not showing and don't typically consider as part of our process unless it's associated with a project regional significance, basically would create three sections to this parcel. The, let's say, the south, the southwest portion, kind of diagonally cut wood, is where the existing residence is. In fact, the aerial might be better, but I'll just describe it. The center portion of this, where the primary set of development constraints for slopes is located, would all be open space, and then the lower 2.5, give or take some, acres would be where they locate, where they locate the home. So, you know, we know as part of Washoe County's development review process, and I know Washoe County staff can speak to this probably in greater detail, they would be required to install the appropriate infrastructure for storm drainage and flood, which I think would be the primary considerations for any related natural resources component. So I think that's, kind of gets at both the efforts and considering what staff looked at and looking at the materials. And if Washoe County staff wants to add anything, feel free to.
Great, thank you, Chris.
Mr. Rob, I got a question. Are they subdividing the lot?
Not, I don't believe so, as part of what we've seen, but I'll invite Washoe County staff up to Julie Olander.
Julie Olander with Washoe County for the record. So as Chris was explaining, this is parcel's going to be sort of split in three different sections. At this time, they haven't come in for a parcel map application. They have to wait until this whole process goes through. So after this process is done, then they will come in probably and split off the parcel that's closest to Woodchuck and make that a parcel for future residents.
So then they'll, they'll come and go to the parcel map review committee and?
You'll see it again.
Okay.
All right, Julie, if you could stick. As to policy RF5A, the proximity to Tier 2 land, this is the second time in a matter of a couple of months that we're changing from Tier 3 to Tier 2 in this area. This obviously is the current margin of suburban development in Washoe County, and as such, it periodically sees folks look into increased density in kind of small and reasonable ways that we've seen. Since Tier 3 doesn't allow for any density increase, is there any possibility of the county itself identifying where marginal density increase would be reasonable in the area and creating a larger Tier 2 area than just each individual parcel coming back all the way to regional plan conformance every time they want to up their density by, from 1 per, 8 to 1 per 5 or something like that?
I'm Julie Olander with Washoe County for the record. I think this is a challenge we have with these tiers, especially in the county, where at the time when this plan was put together, the parcels are pretty well established and the zoning was in place. And now this property owner has come in and requested to sub, eventually subdivide this parcel, and so he's caught with the GR zoning, which won't allow him any more density. So I believe that it's going to be a conversation between regional and Washoe County on some of these outlining areas where there's the potential for them to be divided, and yet they have the zoning in place that doesn't allow that to occur in the future. So yes, I would think this is something would have to be addressed in the future.
Thank you. Any further commission questions for staff?
I just got one. When you're talking about the generalization of changing tiers, of course, you would have to go to the individual landowners and see if they're okay with it.
Right. The, the challenge we have is when the tiers were put in place, there was a community conversation on those tiers, and that's where that would go on and in those, in that process. So a tier doesn't totally impact, doesn't impact a resident, a property owner, the same way as zoning does. It's at a higher level. And so it's only when they come back that they want more density on the property, and the GR properties are limited to that one unit. So that's where we're going to run into that problem in the county is on those GR parcels, because they just don't have any more density. So if this parcel was owned, like some of the parcels to the north are zoned low-density suburban, that's one unit per acre. So they have, and most, most of them are about, well, they vary in sizes, but there's a lot of one acre parcels there. So they, they meet their zoning, so the idea of splitting those up is not as likely as these larger parcels like GR ones. And, and this one doesn't even meet the 40 acres, so it doesn't meet the minimum density within the county. So there are some challenging parcels that are on the fringes of the Tier 2 areas that we're going to be probably bumping into this kind of.
One additional point. This is the dynamic that was more or less set up through, that was set up through the 2019 Regional Plan update, where we identified the Tier 3 areas as needing additional research, basically, to look at the public facilities and services, to look at natural resources, and to ensure that our forward vision, our vision looking forward, is aligned between the jurisdictions and regional. So this process reflects us taking a deeper look at the public facilities and services, natural resources, and then making the decisions on a kind of case-by-case basis. But we certainly have had conversations with county staff about looking more holistically at areas, and this would be a good candidate, because we've now seen two come through.
I would just, Mr. Rob, I would just hope that you would talk to Julie Olander. Some of them may not want change.
It would be a public conversation. I mean, they are made aware of these, these changes to the plans, so they are made aware of those, not maybe the individual parcel, parcel way that we would with a zone change or something like that. They're made of the, I mean, I would let regional staffs.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, understood where that was going, but I'll say that like this process we're seeing now, the decision to change the master plan amendment was came basically from Washoe County, from the landowner. And it would be similar, like in one track, would be similar for an area where people would either decide to do it, or approach county staff, or county staff approached people, and then sponsor, go through their process, and then sponsor an amendment to the regional plan to look at this holistically. So it'd be, the process overall would be fairly similar. Instead of one landowner, it would be multiple, whoever wanted to be a part of that. But that's a little bit more of the process in regard to this case.
All right, well, that was a healthy discussion. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We don't.
All right. Do you think you could bring the motions back up on the screen? All right. Any further discussion, or do I have a motion?
This is Rob. I'll make the compliance review motion. I move to find that the York Amendment to the Washoe County. I move to find the York Amendment to the Washington County Master Planning conformance with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report. Regional plan amendment, I move to adopt the RPC Resolution 24 dash oh two regarding an amendment.
Sorry, I don't have a microphone, Jessica Prenti for the record. If we can possibly. If you could please divide that into two different motions, just in case there's something down the road.
I'd strike those. So let's start over. The conformance review, I move to find that the York Amendment to the Washington County Master Plan in conformance with the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report be approved.
Manny, I second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And then the second one, this is Rob again for the record, or the regional plan amendment. I move to adopt the RPC Resolution 24 dash oh two regarding an amendment to the 2019 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan based on the findings listed in the staff report be approved.
Do I have a second?
Manny, this is Manny again, I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. That's all for item seven B, item seven C.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeremy Smith for the record. Item seven C is a public hearing to receive testimony. This is our third meeting at a location within the city of Sparks concerning approval of the draft of the comprehensive 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan and a recommendation of adoption to the regional planning governing board as required by state law. We have a presentation that has been prepared that goes through all of the changes. You guys have seen it a few times. We're happy to give it again expedited version at your, at your pleasure. We can move on whatever the will of the board is.
Well, could I ask, is there anyone present in the chamber who would like to see the presentation? Who hasn't seen it or who would like to see it again? Seeing no hands. I think we can forego the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we would just want to move to the end of the presentation and bring up the motion slide, please, for action. And of course, as part of that, Mr. Chair, we would open the public hearing, see none, I guess, and we would close it. So I think we're safe.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
We don't.
I don't have the motion here.
Oh.
But I can bring it up. Or we can.
Let's bring it up on the packet, please.
Yes.
Should we just wait till the next meeting, Chris?
What's that?
Should we just wait until the next meeting?
Yeah, let's not. Yeah, we'll go ahead and renotice all three. Hyperlinks. There it is. Yeah, we can zoom into here maybe, please? Thank you.
All right, well, do we have any further board discussion or questions for staff? Anyone who would really like to make this motion?
I will make this motion. This is Marilyn Kramer. I move to accept all testimony and information provided during the public hearing and approve the draft comprehensive 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan as presented, subject to final approval and a recommendation to the RPGB for adoption after the final public hearing scheduled for December 2nd, 2024. That would be today.
Thank you, Marilyn. Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and thank you staff for your excellent work on this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And now we're going to move to that as referenced in the motion. Item seven D, which will be that recommendation item. So we do have like a five slide presentation that we just want to run through really quickly because this will be the first time we've asked you to do precisely this. So here we are, we've done the three public hearings. And I just wanted to kind of go over briefly, what were the, what were the big changes that we're implementing in this 2024 update? We started work, you know, very closely after really the COVID pandemic decided to some degree on the, on the update because we had two really heavy lifts and those were our natural resources plan and our public infrastructure plan. Both of those products and their associated data portal and online dashboard have been completed and established. They've been on that webpage, RPU dash 2024, and you guys have all hopefully had a chance to see all of that. So we made it through and we actually created those new products for the region. It's amazing to get them established. And now they're going to become basically the springboard for any future work that and, and sort of the Aegis, the umbrella efforts through which we can address future work on public infrastructure, facilities and on natural resources. As part of the natural resources plan, we added some targeted policies. We've added a source water protection policy that really builds off the work we've been doing for years to support NDEP and the Western Regional Water Commission and TMA with source water protection. We also, in a similar vein, added a policy to use the regional trails plan, which is another years long effort that we've been involved in with EDON, Eastern Sierra Trails Coalition, the jurisdictions and a big working group of folks that are interested in ensuring that our region has a well-connected world-class trail system. So those are great policies that we think are a nice step forward to, to acknowledge both those efforts. Further, we have the NRCA or Natural Resources Consideration Area Policy, which we're excited about bringing spatial data to bear on every case that regional does and providing a map online for others to use to go ahead and suss out interactions with natural resource considerations. We have that hard development constraints area policy. But now we're looking at what's beyond the hard line. And we should still be considering and concerned about natural resources. And I think, again, we might see the NRCA policy evolve over time to recognize different pieces of data as we become aware of them or as they become more important in, in our regional conversation. Finally, in the NR policy section, we added a, a policy that really requires regional planning to do a better job of collaborating with our Native American tribal governments in Washoe County and ensuring that we're considering their perspective in our review of cases, but also ensuring that there, that we're communicating with them regularly. And that if there are certain cases that we think will be of concern to them, that we're alerting them as quickly in the process as possible and getting their feedback. So those are really the targeted NR policies. We also added a policy to acknowledge that we use digital products, digital maps, digital information in our conformance reviews. If you go into our regional plan, there are maps, but you'd be hard pressed without a magnifying glass and maybe a very fine laser to try to figure out, you know, exactly what that map is saying in relation to a given subject site. So we use digital online information and we provide all of that on our website as well. We are processing a sphere of influence removal for City of Reno parcels that, that cannot be developed. They are currently on federal land, which is development constrained. And we know that there is a, a draft of a, of a bill introduced into Congress for public lands disposal. But these parcels are specifically not indicated in there, they're not listed. And so not only are they on federal land, they're also quite steep and slopy. And really, we're trying to get at, I think, being a little bit more honest about how we portray the footprint of developable land in our region. These areas are in the sphere of influence for the city of Reno, but they can't really be developed. And so rather than show that and, you know, you might, someone might see that and think, oh, look at all this land we can move into. But in fact, it's not developable. So this will actually right-size it, if you will. We're working with staff from both City of Reno and Washoe County and City of Sparks, really, to ensure that we address this in terms of the tiering or the inclusion in the TMSA. After we get the rollback to occur during the update, we would ask one of those bodies to sponsor the amendment to then consider, should they be in tier three, or should we just take them out of the TMSA altogether? So that conversation will come back as the master plans need to be re-vetted once the regional plan is adopted. Every master plan and facilities plan will have to come back for review against these new changes. And then finally, some miscellaneous corrections. In fact, every year we find something to fix and we keep up with maintenance on, on data, you know, stuff like utility corridors. You know, we might approve, you guys might approve a, a utility corridor. But that doesn't mean that the court, that the transmission infrastructure has actually moved right to the new corridor. And so we leave both corridors until physically the transmission infrastructure has been put into the new corridor location. And then we can go in and clean up the old corridor, right? So we just take care of little things like that. We'll be reporting to you about corrections going forward every year. So those are really the changes. It's a pretty targeted, small update in terms of the plan itself, but a big lift to get the NR plan and the public infrastructure plan rolled into the, to the entire schema there. And here we are with the pillars, the pillars of regional planning. So we're going to take on that one in the middle next. That's, that's our goal is to create some strategic goals for the agency and really address creating a document, how we handle our population forecasting, how we look at housing. But now we really have foundational work with data and information that supports the policies that are in the regional plan. And we're looking forward to getting that, that next piece. Okay, so we did this, right? We held the three required RPC public hearings. We just had item seven C and that was the last one. So here we are. At this point, what we're asking you to do is approve and recommend adoption of the draft comprehensive 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan to the governing board for their final decision point, hopefully on December 12th at the regional planning governing board meeting. And there is a proposed motion. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I'm happy to move that we adopt the regional planning commission's Resolution 24 oh three, providing the RPC's approval of the draft comprehensive 2024 Truckee Meadows Regional Plan and recommending adoption to the regional planning governing board. Do I have a second?
I can that motion?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Jeremy, I'd just like to say, good work, Jeremy and staff, good work on this. I know that it took a very, very, very long time and there was a lot of information you guys had to put together to get to this point. And good luck on the next pillar. I know it's going to take a minute to get there, but you guys did an awesome job getting it there, getting us to this point and getting all that information. And your dashboard is a real treat to just dink around in. It's fun to just go to all the different areas and just look and read. And I, I enjoy, I enjoy looking at it and having all that information there so that it's a one-stop shop, so to speak. So thank you, I really appreciate, and I'm sure that everybody on this board appreciates it and the community and the other entities appreciate the work that you guys have done. I echo that. It is kind of a grateful, a lot of work. When are we going to get started on the population?
Yeah, right away, right away, no break.
Can't wait. That's a hot topic, right?
All right, that's all we have for business of the day. Do we have any members and directors reports?
Mr. Chair, I have a very brief report, if I can give that. I just wanted to say in return, thank you to all, each and every one of you and the folks on staff and at the locals for your dedication, direction, support, participation in this big effort, trying to bring these new products to bear. We really appreciate it and we're super excited to be at this point. And really, I think to see where these product, how they evolve and how they're useful, you know, to our, to our community and how we can, you know, never stop continuing to make things better. So that's always, always on our mind too, but we're, we're super excited to be at this milestone. So thank you. Just want to update you, since this is the body that controls the resolution defining projects of regional significance. We had a meeting today, Vice Chair Lazareski was there with us. And we discussed schools and, and regional planning and the intersection of new schools and regional planning with a group of stakeholders that have some differences of opinion and we're really looking for points of agreement. I think we found some points of agreement on the concept of how to incorporate more information from the state public charter school authority and other, other groups associated with charter schools into our, our view of long range planning. They have a much shorter sort of view on what long range planning is, maybe a couple of years versus what the school district does, which is a 20-year outlook. But right now we have zero years of outlook. So getting any years in there is going to be a step in the right direction. And folks seem committed to want to, to continue the conversation after the first of the year. We're going to bring the group back together to specifically address if we need, if we think we need a resolution or a guideline, rather, in the PRS resolution to address schools of a certain size or certain characteristics as projects of regional significance. Still on the table, still talking about it, and we'll look forward to bringing that back as an update to a, a future meeting in, in January or February. I will just say that I thank you for your attention to the meetings that we've had. There's been a flurry of meetings here recently, so thank, and the rescheduling. Thank you very much for dealing with the rescheduling. It's always, it's tough with a 30-day notice period for three meetings. But now you, you get a break. Our next meeting of this body will be on January 23rd over at the RTC Great Room on Terminal Way. So that's going to be our, our home next year for, for the meetings. And finally, just, we'll keep you posted on how things go on the 12th, hopefully thumbs up. And if I don't speak to you guys or see you before, I hope you have a super great holiday season and enjoy some, some time away from work. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any report from council?
Jessica Prenti for the record, nothing to report and just wish everyone a very happy holiday season.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? Hearing none. Do we have any further public comment on general items?
We have none.
Sure.
No, I don't know, you're not alone. You?
I'll keep it short and sweet. Welcome to Sparks for some of the commissioners that aren't on the side. I'm Donald Abbott, I'm one of our city council members for, for the beautiful city of Sparks. And just want to thank you all for your service to our community. I know it's not a, it's a thankless job for sure at times, but we appreciate it. And I know you guys get a fat paychecks doing this and we appreciate, appreciate those paychecks here, doing what you do. But we have an amazing team. I'm blessed to be on the board, the governing board. And it's, it's been an amazing board to learn, obviously. Jeremy and his team, they're, they're all rock stars and can't say that enough. And at least from the lessed sides, we appreciate everything you guys are doing from staff to you guys being here and making those hard decisions. And so happy holidays. And I was just here to listen, see if anyone from the public was going to be here and just chime in. And yeah, happy to be here in Sparks. So thanks, take care. And I'll fill out a card, I promise.
Thank you very much, council member. Is that all for public comment? Do we have any written correspondence?
No, we do not at this time.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned.